Okay, I think we got nine AM. It's only eight fifty-eight in District Three, so.
They were always behind.
Yeah. You're District Two, you're behind too.
Is there a way to get more than just four pictures on one screen?
So, I just found this out. If you, if you're on a computer, if you right-click on somebody who doesn't have voice activated.
There's EJ, EJ's up.
You could actually hide all non-video participants from showing up in my gallery.
I'm using my phone, maybe that's the problem.
There, there should be an option to do it through that as well. I just don't know what the command would be.
Okay, no worries. As long as you guys can hear me and I can hear you, that's really what matters.
Okay, I think we have everybody on, on now, so. Morning, everyone. Morning.
Morning.
Hey, Johanna or Jake or Sam, will you guys give us, when we're ready to go here?
Yeah, one moment. Okay, we're ready.
Guys are good.
Good to go.
Hey.
Oh, Eddie dropped out.
It's back on. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open up the meeting for our special board meeting. March thirty-fourth, twenty twenty. And we'll start, as always, with a moment of silence. Do we have any dedications today? Nope. Okay, Dr. Pace, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Right, the United States of America.
Under oath.
Public, which stands.
Thank you. Johanna, do we have any, do we have any items that are not appearing on the agenda?
No. No, there are no extra items.
There are no extra items appearing, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, bring it back to the board. Consent agenda, consent agenda is, are usually non-controversial items at board level. Are there any items that would like to be removed from the board?
No.
Any items, challenging, but I think any items from the public, any, where email sent in, either way requesting to have an item removed?
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, alright. Not, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion to approve the consent agenda five point one through five point eight.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's gonna be my roll call.
Oh, that's right. Thanks, Rob.
Okay, so should I do it now?
Yes, go ahead, Johanna.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Okay, most of us, thank you very much. Alright, moving right along, the agenda item here. I have nine oh five exactly on my phone, I don't know what they have, can't see the clock in the courtroom there, but I got nine oh five, so, was there any public input?
Mr. Chair, the public input that I have received via email is, I believe, all tied to the comments that will be for specific agenda items when you get to those.
Okay, alright.
I don't know if Jake has anything else that he has received.
Do you have any public input Jake received this morning, or before the deadline?
Uh, no public input yet.
Okay. I've seen no public input. We'll go ahead and move forward with our nine oh five item, item six point two. Consideration of continuation of a local health emergency in order prohibiting the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal transportation and disposal of fire debris for the Mendocino complex fire. And I think this would be an item that would be presented by Denise, or...
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is an item that I imagine our health officer would present it. It appears he may not, he may not be on the call. He was a minute ago, so maybe he got disconnected.
Okay.
And it looks like he, there he is. Okay.
He's back on?
Uh, yeah, hi, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, there you are, Dr. Pace.
Okay, great. Yeah, so Jazz is here as well, Denise is not in today. This is the same situation, there's been no real change. We're just, we're essentially waiting for the weather to clear so that the CalOES can come out and help us complete this task that's been dragging on for quite some time now. So, we would just like to request an extension so that we can continue to hold out until the weather gets better and go ahead and pursue this once they're able to get back out onto the site.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pace. Bring it back to the board, any questions from board members?
Yeah, I do have a question. Thank you. Dr. Pace, does, I believe that the workers that would be dealing with this are on the essential workers list. Is that correct? So this wouldn't, the COVID-nineteen situation wouldn't slow down this process of finally cleaning up the Mendocino complex fire?
Right, we're basically allowing any of the cleanup or preparation for the next fire season to be part of the essential workers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions from the board? EJ? Okay. Looks like you're, alright, excellent. Any public comment, either Carol and then Jake. Carol, is there a public comment on this item?
Mr. Chair, I do not have any public comment on this item.
Or any public input, okay. Jake, how about you on item six point two?
I don't have any public input on this item either.
Thank you. Alright, with that, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, to approve a continuation of a local health emergency and prohibiting the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal transportation and disposal of fire debris for the Mendocino complex fire.
Second.
Okay, the motion and a second, we'll go ahead and do roll call vote. Go ahead, Johanna.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Hey, Moke, I got a text from somebody who said that the Facebook Live isn't working, so I don't know if that's something we wanna confirm right now, or just move forward, I'm not sure. But that's, I'm not sure if anybody else got that message, but I just got it, got a text.
When I looked at the Facebook, it says to go direct, it has a link directly to our Granicus video that's playing off of our website.
Okay, I will pass that on. Thank you, Rob.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just an additional note. As you'll notice, the folks in the room appear to be mostly county department heads or departments, and staff who are monitoring public requests to join a meeting via Zoom advised me that thus far, we haven't had any member of the public asked to join the meeting. So, we do have input that the public has sent us via email for some of the future items. So, unless the people added to the meeting per their request, I think it will be correct to say that Jake will not have any input on any item unless people join.
Okay. So, just to be clear, Bruno, that link is actually in the Facebook feed, or how's that?
Yeah, it shows here fourteen minutes ago on the County of Lake, California Facebook page. This morning's Board of Supervisors meeting will be broadcast live via the county's Granicus feed and Lake County Peg TV. We have received reports, the video feed is performing more consistently via Granicus and our Facebook live stream, so you're very encouraged to try that option, and then they have a link.
Okay, thank you.
Sam's informing me that it's also live on Facebook.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Carol, thank you for that update also. Moving along with the next item, item six point three, our nine-ten item. A consideration of update on COVID-nineteen by our public health officer, Dr. Gary Pace. So, Dr. Pace, go ahead and take the floor.
Great, well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk again. We are, so, each week I come back and the situation's a little bit worse in, kind of nationally, and in LA and in San Francisco. It's also increasing in the counties around us. The, at this point, we still do not have any confirmed cases in the county. We've had a total of ninety or so negative tests. We are aware of thirty more tests that are, the results are pending. We, we have been kind of in a very active preparation mode here. So, you know, kind of the way I think about this is the first step of what we've been doing is really dampening down on social mobility, dampening down on the travel. And from where we are a week ago to now, that's, we've been a lot more successful of that. There's been hundreds of contacts with non-essential businesses, sort of talking to them, and there's been very few citations that have been given. Both our, both of our environmental health people and the, the law enforcement have been going out and meeting with people that seem to be in violation of the intention of the order and educating them, and there's been really pretty good compliance for the most part. The lake is, seems to be much, much quieter now. There's, we seem to have had a lot of success in slowing down the travel coming up from the Bay Area. So, I feel like what we were seeing the previous weekend was not present this weekend and isn't present out there. Of course, you know, this has been very stressful to the community, and economically, it's potentially disastrous at this point. And, but we're, at least that part has been moving, been slowing down. And what we've, what we're starting to see is that some of the evidence in California versus New York and also in other places around the country is that we may be starting to see some of the benefits from this shelter-in-place strategy because the escalating curves may not be as bad as we thought they were gonna be, but it's still very early. It's just been about ten days to two weeks now, and so we're just at the point where we might start seeing the positive results from that. So, that's the preparation phase. We've been making some changes to going to telework. I know there's been a lot of changes in the county system, certainly at the courthouse, and there's also a lot of specifics that have been addressed through the community, whether it's different kinds of gatherings or different kinds of questions people have had that have been coming through the email and the phone lines that we've been trying to address. So, there's been a lot of work at doing that, there's been a lot of involvement with the community, and I feel that we've been pretty darn successful with that. And so then the next part is the testing, which is a huge issue and continues to be a struggle. We've spent a lot of time the last week trying to acquire some sampling, some specimen sampling materials, and we have been successful in getting some of that. We ran twenty samples of kind of mildly symptomatic people in the last week or so. They've all been negative, so that was an interesting surveillance strategy to see if we could pick up anything in the people that weren't getting tested, we couldn't. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's not out there, but it means at least there's some sampling that was reassuring. We now have about between a hundred and a hundred and fifty other specimen sampling kits that we've been able to rustle up. And what we're gonna do here is Chief Sepeda is working, we don't really have the staff to set up a drive-through testing site, which is what people have been reading about in the Bay Area. And those have been kind of quasi-successful, there've been a lot of problems with those, require a lot of staff and a lot of kind of crowd control and traffic control. What we're gonna do is, we're going to set up with the help of Chief Sepeda and with Lynn, our nurse here, to try to work through the medical provider community. And if some of them are ordering tests that they feel like they're not having luck getting through the normal channels, they can contact us and we can go out to the patient's home and try to basically get the sample and send it over to the public health lab. We really only have the capacity to do about ten a day like that, but at least it's something. I, the way it looks to me is very likely in a couple of weeks, new technology is gonna be coming online and more testing is gonna be available through the normal testing channels. This is a total kind of jerry-rigged, you know, bailing wire kind of strategy, but it seems really important for the community to get this availability during this next couple of weeks because if we can pick up the first couple of cases as they're just getting, starting to present themselves, then we can move in and do contact tracing and help those people isolate better and potentially really prevent the spread from getting out in the community a lot. So, I think, so the testing piece is really, really important here. So then the next piece is going into the preparations for when cases do come available. And so, we're setting up these teams, mainly through volunteers because we don't have enough staff, to try to set up a contact tracing team, which is so when somebody does test positive, somebody can go in and talk to them about all the people they've been in contact with for the previous week and start setting up the how to screen and how to talk with those folks. And then also an isolation team, which is either, if people have the ability to isolate at home where they can have, be off in a separate room and somebody can take care of them and do the proper precautions so that they won't get sick, then they can stay home. Otherwise, we're trying to set up some sites where people can have the option to, if they can't really do it at home, that they can go to this site. And there's been a lot of effort through social services, through Supervisor Brown, different people working hard to try to get some things set up for this so that people have an option if they don't really have a home situation. This conducive to that. So, that, so we can talk about that a little bit. Basically, the, at this point, the preparation, looks like what we're working towards is getting the fairgrounds site available with both trailers. We've ordered fifty trailers through FEMA with fifty more probably being ordered a couple of weeks down the road. We don't know when those are gonna come in, we're not sure where we are in the line, but the order is in for the first fifty. Supposedly, the state's gonna pay for that, and we don't have to pay for that. We're trying to set up staffing to set this up and security and all the kind of pieces with it. They'll be sited out at the fairgrounds. There's been some issues with the fairgrounds, but it looks like that's probably gonna get resolved today. There's all, and if we are gonna need more than the fifty sites or if the trailers are late coming in, we're also starting to set up some sites in a couple of the buildings out on the fairgrounds. So, it's gonna be more like a typical shelter scene, but with, you know, adequate space between it. And we're gonna need to get food out there and have some kind of medical sort of oversight. And we're working really through the volunteer community to try to set all this up. And so, there's a lot of effort going on in that, and I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of challenges with this because people are reluctant to go in and working with people with the COVID. But this is really from the point of view of outbreak management, the more we can test, the more we can contact trace, and the more we can isolate the sick people from the well people, the less this is gonna spread in a kind of inflammatory fashion and overwhelm the healthcare capacity. So then, if you, then talking about the other pieces of this, healthcare facilities are, both the hospitals are hard at work on trying to get, prepare for the surge. They, like I've said before, there are eleven ventilators that are available now, four ICU rooms in each place, so there's really, you know, so it would be a stretch to even use the eleven. Sutter is able to expand to five more ventilator sites because of the, because of some of the surge planning if they get the special waiver, and so we're in a position where we need that, they're able to do that. So, we could have a total of sixteen ventilators. The, they're also setting up some triage sites so that the tents up in front of Sutter, and we're, we are, you know, so there's basically a lot of planning going on. Again, this is, you know, we have a somewhat vulnerable healthcare capacity in this county just because it's been critical access hospitals and there's, the medical, professional medical community is fairly small, and so if people get sick, there's gonna be all kinds of challenges. But both hospitals are working through their corporate structures to try to really be on top of this. The outpatient clinics have been really focused on decreasing well people checks and only dealing with acute visits and trying to really go toward a telemedicine strategy so that people aren't being out and about in the community and it's protecting the medical providers. The state has approved that so that they can get paid for that. The, a couple of other things just to talk about is the particularly vulnerable people in the community are the elders, the people with chronic medical conditions. So, a lot of this isolation strategy is going to be focused on those people as well. If somebody is sick and they have an elder in their house or if they have somebody who's got chronic medical conditions, they need to stay away from those people. And we're particularly concerned about those people getting the COVID because those are the people that end up dying more with a much higher frequency. So, we've been trying to talk to the seniors. This past week, we really kind of got to the point where I'm discouraging the senior hours at the markets, so I think the seniors, if they're sixty-five and over, they should just stay home and not be out in public. They should, it's much preferable to have somebody else go out and do their shopping for them and some of that stuff. The senior centers have all shut down, they're congregating, eating and really working hard on delivering food and having food pickups. Part of the problem is their volunteer staff tends to be in the senior kind of population as well, so there's some challenges there, but they seem to be navigating that at this point. They definitely are seeing increased demand for food. The homeless population is another one of the vulnerable communities out there, and Pastor Shannon's been working really hard on providing good care and kind of sensitive care to the situation in this outbreak. So, she just started last night at the, at the new site that they have, which is the old Record B building across the street from where they were, across from the Kmart. And they've, they're just expanding now to twenty-four hour care, which is really good because that's how people can shelter in place, so they need to have, they need to have a shelter. So, she's got it set up, so there's dividers between all the beds, I mean, space six feet between the beds, six feet between where they eat, and keeping the numbers to a certain level. So, it's been very impressive work they've done. They're gonna stay, they've agreed to stay open till the end of April. And then they're willing to stay longer, there's gonna, they're gonna need some funding help at that point, but they do have the funding to stay till the end of April. There's also questions about, Chief Rasmussen felt that there was another handful of homeless people in the Lakeport area that could benefit from the shelter, and so she's willing to consider expanding somewhat, but would need some funding help with that as well. So, she's talking with Todd and with Crystal around that and see if she can access some of those funds for that. There's also interest in getting a similar site over in the Clear Lake part of the county, but there's not been a building identified yet and, you know, funding issues around all that. But she's interested in that, it's a really great step for us in terms of preventing this outbreak, getting into that vulnerable community. Because you can imagine, once it gets out into the homeless camps, it could be a real problem. The jail is working really hard on keeping that place safe. So, they've decreased the population as much as they could. They've not allowing visitors coming in now and having direct contact with people, and they've worked out some isolation strategies and all that. So, and then, yeah, I think that's, so then the last piece to just talk about is how we're trying to communicate all this. We've been working with the email and the phone lines to try to answer questions or about essential businesses or anything about the COVID that people have. We've had, you know, three to four people manning the phone lines. We've been trying to do Facebook videos, a short Facebook video every day, although yesterday we had some technical difficulties. We've been, I've done some interviews and kind of press releases. Our website is pretty good, we're keeping up to date as best we can. And then tonight, we have a virtual town hall, which Carol's gonna be moderating. And Assemblywoman Aggie Arcurry's gonna weigh in on in the beginning and the end, and then it'll be Sheriff Martin, myself, Brock from the schools, Chief Sepeda, Dr. Douglas from Mendocino Community Health Center, and the other people from each of the hospitals and from tribal health have been invited, and so they may respond later today. And then next Wednesday, Senator McGuire's doing a virtual town hall with Mendocino and Wood Lake County on Wednesday night. So, I think that's kind of the general overview, and I'm sure you have questions, so.
Okay, Dr. Pace, bring it back to the board, you have questions. Bruno, do you have a question?
I do have a question, thank you. I know that, I wanted to share something and let you say yourself, Dr. Pace, which I thought was really interesting in one of our meetings, and I think the public should be aware. You said something along the lines that if somebody is tested from Lake County but in an outside of the county hospital, that those numbers still get placed into the national database, which would still affect our numbers. So, if one of our own residents was tested in San Francisco and found to have COVID-nineteen, it would pop up as we have one case of COVID-nineteen. Is that correct, the way I understood it?
Right, yeah, so there's a statewide database that, and the labs, the lab results, so we don't necessarily know when a lab is taken, but when the lab results come back, and they should all come back to the doctor that ordered it, but also to the county of residents. And so, you know, the health department here should be informed of any Lake County residents that have been tested anywhere in the state. And, you know, it's not a hundred percent, but it's been working as far as we know. We get quite a few tests from other, from, you know, Sonoma County or San Francisco of Lake County residents.
Yeah, I just, I thought that was an interesting and important point to make, that we're grabbing as much information as we can from every healthcare facility that sees our residents, and so it's important to know that we're getting all that information back. Again, I've asked you this before- Um, again, I, I asked you this before, but just asking again, we're not seeing a surge in our hospitals right now, which would contradict the, the numbers that we have. Uh, they're still, the, the hospitals are still dealing with somewhat the same, uh, ratio of sick people that they usually deal with?
As far as I know, and the contact I've had with them, we've not seen a surge. I can tell you, I've seen a surge in just people in, you know, the workplace here. So I don't know whether that's reflective of it or not, uh, in the last couple of days. I'm, uh, you know, a little bit concerned that this is the week we're gonna see it because of the activity last week, the, the previous weekend. You know, this would just about be the right time in the next couple of days that I would expect it. And they're seeing a big surge down in, in Sonoma County now. You know, they're up to eighty or ninety or something like that now. And so it's, um, you know, I think it's, it's probably coming any time now. And again, I just, I'm, I'm really grateful each day we get to be able to put this structure in place where we have a little better capacity to respond to it is a, is a real blessing in my, my opinion. But, um, yeah, I, at, at this point, I'm not aware of a big surge, but I will be surprised if this time next week I say the same thing.
I, I have two more questions left. One is, uh, I know that the hospitals are doing their best to prepare for the surge. You said that they're setting up tents and then, uh, kind of figuring out the number of patients that they might have coming to their hospitals. Are they doing anything to try and at least, uh, put their names on some potential ventilators? I know we're all fighting for ventilators right now, uh, but with our small amount that we have here, uh, are they doing anything for the ventilators? Or are there already processes in place to be able to do what they usually do, which is to be able to send out of county so that our people can be taken care of? Uh, just wanna check in on that.
So that's a great question. So, um, you know, I think there's, so in terms of specifically around the ventilator question, the, uh, they are working through their corporate structures to see, you know, to try to, uh, get their names on some. The problem is, is that limitations in terms of trained staff and, um, the other supportive equipment around it. You know, the ventilator is just one piece of it. It's sort of like you get a race car. You gotta have the mechanics and all the people around to deal with it. And, um, that's a limitation. So I think, uh, but the ventilator piece, they are working through their corporate structure. We have also, there's another way to get it, which is through the normal resource request way, which is, you know, what we've done a lot during the fires to get equipment and things like that. But that's, um, you don't really pressure that until you get to the point where you're anticipating the need, you know, because you may end up getting stuck with the cost. And ventilators, as you can guess, are really expensive. I think probably more reasonable is there's some talk about trying to work with people that normally would be put on a ventilator but using high flow oxygen. So there's some discussion about that, although I'm not sure where that's gonna go. And, uh, the other piece is what you're discussing, which is the, the transport out, which is really what the system in Lake County is designed for. These, both these hospitals are critical access hospitals, which are really designed to stabilize people or people that are kind of more straightforward things stay and otherwise they go to the regional level. You know, the Bay Area is probably not gonna be the pathway where people can go like they normally do. And so there's discussions about going to Central Valley, going up to, uh, to Redding and up in that direction. And, um, so, you know, those pathways are being discussed and the EMS systems are, are, uh, sort of considering all that. We're just kind of waiting to see where the spaces are gonna be and how to do all that. The other piece of this is, is the state, uh, one of their responses to this is to try to set up some other surge capacity. So, which is like, there's a, a hospital down in Daly City, down outside of San Francisco, that I think it's four hundred and fifty beds. It's called a Seek Medical Center that they're, the state's basically taking over to use for this, uh, gap between anticipated need and what the need actually is. There's the, the ship is just pulled into Los Angeles, I think, yesterday, that can hold a thousand people. And there's some discussion about setting up a site in Redding for two hundred and fifty people up there to do the surge capacity. So, you know, the other piece of it is, is that what they've done, been doing is working with these projections of what they anticipate the potential cases are. And you've probably seen those graphs. And then the actual bed capacity in an area. This is a big part of what this whole strategy has been about, um, all the stuff I was talking about earlier, from the decreasing mobility to the isolation and everything, is to slow the spread of the virus out of the community. We're not gonna be able to stop it because it's a virus, but to, to control the spread so that you don't get this huge peak, so that we don't have fifty people needing a ventilator at once. But if we can sort of slow it down enough so that the healthcare system can manage what comes to it, which is a little bit of what we're, the suggestion is that we're seeing in the Bay Area now, that it's not peaking as high as it, or hardened as fast as it was in, in, um, New York. And they think it might be because the governor got the whole state sort of shut down fairly quickly. And, um, so it's not that we're gonna not see these folks getting sick, but at least it, we're, we're hoping we may be seeing some of the benefits from all the misery people have been in lately of just having to stay home and not, not work and everything, that it'll slow the, the peak of that.
Okay. And my last thing is, uh, just a quick comment. Uh, we've already discussed the, uh, the testing. Uh, that was part of a cup, public comment that we received that's on our agenda. Uh, the other one was about the lake closure. Uh, and I'm just gonna make my comment that I, I think that we're, we are not wanting to close the lake unless we have to, and at this moment, we have to. And until we feel safe, and that's when we'll, we review the possibility of reopening. But until then, that's what it is. That's my opinion, uh, not, not the board's or yours, Dr. Pace. Uh, but also I want to say thank you very much for all the hard work. I know this is all new for every public health officer to deal with, and I think you're doing a fabulous job. Thank you very much for keeping us informed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruno. Uh, other board members? Supervisor Grant, you're still on mute, but I see you. There you go.
Yeah. So I just wanted to, you know, echo what, uh, what Bruno just said about the lake and being outside. Cause I know there was a discussion too about people using the schools and whatnot. And, uh, my younger son, he's in his twenties, and I think that was the issue with some of the people at the schools that are going there and working out or playing something, basketball, football. And, uh, it's the perception of everything. And that's what our, uh, that's what the whole point of it. Uh, if people are seeing others out, there's always that justification or rationalization that, hey, I can do it too. And then we're back outside and giving us more exposure to this possibility. So, um, you know, it's just great to, it's better to encourage people just to stay indoors and steer away from things like that. And so I just really wanted to echo that, you know, for all the folks that are watching. And it, of course, it's my opinion, but I think that's the whole point of it, so.
Thank you, Bruno. Supervisor Brown, Supervisor Scott.
Just wanna thank Dr. Pace for all his hard work and, um, I, I think I heard you say one time that it's, this virus is probably here, we just haven't reached the, the high level of saturation. Um, so we do need to keep staying vigilant and staying home and doing our best to protect our community.
Uh, Mo, I do, I do wanna, I do wanna say.
Supervisor Brown.
I don't have any questions right now, and that's largely because, um, as you know, and, and, uh, Bruno, we, we're on the calls each morning and getting this information. So, um, so, you know, any questions that we've had, we've asked, and I, I think everything's been asked as far as for the public's concern. I know Bruno asked a ton of questions that we're all, you know, our constituents are asking us, so I think those are answered. So I, I don't really have anything else other than that.
Thank you, Rob. Um, I would like to echo the rest of the board's sentiments also. Dr. Pace, thank you very much for being open, uh, with the information as you're making your decisions with the rest, you know, with the board as we're able to get on the calls. So I wanna thank you for that. I wanna thank all the workers, uh, for the county and everybody who's stepping up at this point. Uh, this has been going on, as you said, for ten or twelve days or so, uh, now. And, um, I know everybody is working diligently, uh, to make sure we're as safe as possible. Uh, Bruno hit it right on the head. At this point, closing the lake is something you only do in extreme measures, and this is a time of extreme measures. I wanna thank the entire Lake County community, uh, for buying into this. I know it is very painful on the businesses and also just on folks being isolated. But I wanna thank everybody in the community for buying in. See it more and more each day, and see social distancing happening a little bit better each day. Our businesses, our stores, you see tape on the floor, you see those things being done. So I just wanna thank everybody in the community for following, uh, Dr. Pace's orders and also the, the governor's orders to keep us safe. So, um, thank you very much, everyone. Um, I think at this point, we'll go ahead and move to public comment. Carol?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The first public comment I'd like to call to your attention, uh, is some that we received in time to add it to this agenda item in Granicus. But knowing that several of you are using your iPads to participate in the meeting, you may not be able to see that information. And so if you'd like, I can read it. Would you like me to read it, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So the first comment actually came in last week, um, but was missed. And, um, and it's a question that really pertains to, uh, Dr. Pace's update. And so the, the question is coming from Cynthia Field via email. And she says, "In response to the COVID-19 outbreak, the Lake County IHSS office has instructed caregivers to continue with their job responsibilities in spite of the potential risk involved for both providers and recipients. Ambiguity surrounding tests have created an environment of unnecessary guesswork as to whether IHSS workers should self-quarantine. By the same token, asymptomatic workers could unintentionally spread the virus to vulnerable segments of the population. As a member of SEI Local 2015, California's Long-Term Care Workers Union, I am requesting that officials pursue a definitive solution to the problems surrounding COVID-19 testing. Is testing currently available in the county? And if so, could it be done proactively for essential workers?"
Go ahead and, uh, turn this over to Dr. Pace.
Well, um, right. So the concern that, um, the, that, that person is bringing up is really important. It's, um, the testing is inadequate to what we need right now. And, um, that's not, in Lake County, that's over the state, it's over the country. And, um, other countries have done a lot better jobs than we've done, and it's very, very frustrating from the medical point of view and from the public health point of view. So she absolutely is on the right track there about that we wish we were doing better than this. And, you know, this has been going on for over a month now. I think we're probably fairly close to things improving, but then some of the supplies may dry up because of the supply chain problems. But, um, uh, apparently, uh, Northern Italy was where a lot of the swabs were made. And so now there's a supply chain problem there. Um, so, but that being said, so there's some new technology coming out. There's a new quick turnaround test that will be available, very expensive, needs special machinery. It, it takes about forty-five minutes, um, to, uh, to, uh, get results. It's, uh, so it's something that, um, the, the local hospitals will not have, but the regional, uh, corporate partners will have them so that they can probably get, get that sort of thing. Uh, it should be starting in the next couple of days and then, you know, so they have to roll it out, et cetera. So over the next couple of weeks, that's something that's, that's a potential improvement. I think the question about, um, IHSS workers and how to keep people safe that are taking care of other people is also really important. I mean, you know, when you look in, when you watch what's happening in New York, when you watch what's happening around, some of the healthcare providers are getting sick. Uh, and, you know, the, we don't really, it's a, it's, there's not a great answer for that. We have limited amount of personal protective equipment, and so if we use it all up now before the virus is really in the community, we're kind of leaving ourselves in a bad situation a month from now when it's probably gonna be here much more prevalent. Um, the kind of the current thinking is that, uh, if people are not symptomatic, that they can go ahead and work. And you're absolutely right. You can be spreading the virus a couple of days before you get symptoms. Um, how did, you know, who's gonna take care of these folks? Uh, we, we're just having to balance out this problematic situation of taking care of our community where there is some risk involved that people are asymptomatic carriers before they're getting sick. Again, at this point, because of the low prevalence in the community, we're probably okay, but that's going to change. And we won't know when it is until after the fact. Um, and, uh, so I think all those concerns are correct, and I think each person has to make their own decision. The guidance is, is reasonable, but the guidance is trying to balance out how to provide care for somebody versus how to keep people safe. And the current thinking is, is if you're symptomatic, if you're an IHSS worker and you're symptomatic, you need to stay home until you're clear. If we had enough tests, we would wanna test those people to make sure that what's going on. The tests aren't perfect, and they, the people that are working in as caregivers or in congregant facilities tend to be able to get tests quicker than others because we're concerned about the contagion. Um, and with this, you know, this limited number of tests we're gonna start providing in the community, that'll help a little bit, but it's not, you know, it's not the solution. And, uh, we're in a situation that's not optimal in terms of our preparation. And that's a, that's a national concern, you know? It's not Lake County. Lake County is actually doing pretty good at this point, and people are mobilized and the public is doing a, a really a pretty good job at this point of slowing things down and paying attention. And the leadership, Board of Supervisors, has really been responsive and moving forward in a good way. And, uh, so, you know, um, but I, I share the, the questioners' concerns and, um, you know, we're just trying to walk a, a, a fine line between taking care of people and not getting them sick. And not always gonna work.
Okay, thank you, uh, Dr. Pace. Uh, are there any more?
Mr. Chair, there's quite a bit more.
Go ahead.
Would you like me to keep going?
Yes.
So, so this next, uh, one also came to you via email from Brian Dobrowski. Uh, and it's a lengthy one, so bear with me while I read it. Um, "As you know, last week, uh, last week, the lake was shut down to minimize non-resident traffic coming into our community. As a concerned citizen, I'm concerned about non-residents from the Bay Area flocking into our community to enjoy the recreational pleasures of the lake during this time of crisis. I am also aware that some people may not be adhering to social distancing standards while conducting recreational activities. These should be enforced during this time." I agree. "Since we all know what the actual problem here is, I will cut straight to the chase. What I am asking the Board of Supervisors to do is simply please consider at least opening our lake to local residents only. This is not a hard task to enforce due to the fact that not having quadus stickers on your vessel while on our lake can carry a fine up to a thousand dollars and an impoundment of said resident, said non-resident vessel. Um, non-resident stickers are easily identified by law enforcement and color differences found, uh, on resident to non-resident stickers. What I'm pointing out here is the consequence of much higher than the five hundred dollar fine put forth to locals not adhering to social distancing guidelines. Another supporting key argument is keeping the lake open for locals is due to mental health. I'm sure the health officer of this county can agree that mental health is certainly just as important as physical health. Many people on kayaks get much-needed exercise and fresh air through this recreational activity. Recreational fishing and boating is also certainly an activity which allows adequate social distancing. For example, my boat is exactly nineteen feet, ten inches in length and allows approximately fifteen feet of distance between me and the back deck angler. If I'm fishing with a back deck angler, for the most part, that is my wife who resides in the same household as I. Most local anglers here in fact do fish alone a lot of times, and this allows for a perfectly reasonable, safe form of outdoor recreation. My third supporting argument pertains to people fishing for free. Despite the rumors which circulate in our community of..." Despite the rumors which circulate in our community about the fish being unhealthy for consumption, the Department of Fish and Games suggests that through testing, they can determine that the mercury levels in our lake are no higher than any other body of water that people eat fish from in California. Harvesting fish for consumption out of our lake is a much safer means of obtaining food at this time, as my chances of contracting this virus is much higher shopping in food markets. Because, let's be honest, people are breathing in an enclosed area which essentially cannot be controlled by any sort of social distancing. All we can do is our best here, which may not be enough. Considering this fact, some residents may not feel safe shopping in grocery stores and would rather utilize our local resource here in light of that circumstance. My fourth supporting argument for keeping the lake open to residents in this crisis is also this: We want people to not move from county to county as much as possible. Keeping our local waterways open to locals only will only motivate our local boating and fishing community to stay here locally and not move around to either utilize our local food source as a resource or stay home locally by having a means to make the best out of a bad situation while, while also having a perfectly safe means to recreate and establish a mental health outlet. I will stress the importance of adhering to social distancing mandates while conducting the form of essential activity, though. Social distancing during a crisis is important and must be enforced on the water as well as off. I understand our law enforcement is stretched thin. I am no stranger to these situations, as I am a prior service Army Sergeant with twenty-four months' time spent in combat, and have experienced these understaffings, understaffing situations firsthand. What I can tell the Board in terms of enforcing these measures is simple: Personnel staffing of law enforcement, uh, does not have to change, as I'm sure the Board is well aware that we still have our Boat Patrol active on this lake enforcing the shutdown anyway. My suggested enforcement plan would be this: We utilize our boat wrap monitors, and when they see a non-resident enter our waterways, the boat wrap monitor must communicate that to both Boat Patrol to enforce quickly. I'm confident we can get it done. It is perfectly logical way to use teamwork here and resources we already have to ensure our community is safe during this time of crisis without taking a key, essential resource from them. It also allows members of our community to enjoy our Bill of the Lake and stay sane at the same time. In closing, I would like to remind the Board that Governor Newsom did state the fact that outdoor recreation while keeping adequate social distance was an acceptable form of essential activity due to mental health reasons. Recreational fishing and boating certainly does fall within that category, even though it was not specifically mentioned by him. I would also like to ask the Board to please sincerely consider these ideas and points I have laid out here. The people in this community have been through enough crises already, and as Supervisor Brown knows, it's getting old, quote unquote. It is really necessary to make, is it really necessary to make life harder on people when it does not have to be? I'm a hundred percent confident that as a community, we can certainly make this happen for the people and stay safe at the same time. Sincerely, Brian Dobrowski, who is a homeowner in Kelseyville.
Uh, Supervisor Brown, I know you wanted to make a comment. Go ahead.
So, I don't, I don't disagree with what he's saying. I, I just, there's good arguments, there's good valid arguments for both sides of this. Here's the situation, and to put it in context, what I said was, at some point, the business owners in this county are going to feel that this is getting old and we're ready to go back to work. I don't, that hasn't changed. Everybody's going to feel that way at some point. Whether or not we can remains to be seen. So I just wanted to put that comment in context. Um, the, the, uh, the statement, "Our law enforcement is stretched thin," couldn't be more understated. It's, it's not, here's the thing, in San, in Santa Rosa, I think, I believe I'm right, it may be more, but I think Santa Rosa PD actually has eight officers that are, um, that have tested positive for COVID. This is not about, you know, stopping a group of people on the boat. You're, we're not, we don't have resources out on the lake that can just drive around and stop and check and see if you're local or if you're not local. The, the issue is right now, and this is temporary, it has to be all or nothing. It has to be on everything. We, we can't, you know, it'd be like saying we have to go to the grocery store and check everybody that comes in. If you're local, you can go in. If you're not local, then you have to get in your car and go back wherever you can. When this first happened, we saw thousands of people, literally thousands of people that own property up here, that came here from wherever they were just for that purpose, get some fresh air, get up here where they can move around a little bit. Things were a little lighter then. But the reality is they're here. So they go out on the lake with a boat, and they're not using the boat ramps. They own property here with docks. They, they're out there on the lake. You know, what do you do? We don't have the resources to go out and inspect and, and, and just selectively say, you know, "Your license doesn't show that you're here. Prove us your address," you know, that kind of stuff. And my point about all the officers in Santa Rosa that, that are sick, uh, is that we're trying to avoid that by minimizing the contact that our, uh, law enforcement has right now. We, there's no point in, in saying, I, I don't disagree with Mr. Dobrowski. I'd be so nice for people to get out on the lake and be able to do that. It'd be nice if they could, but they can't. It's just, that's just the way it is. And I, I, I know there are people out there that disagree with me, but I'm suspecting more and more people, people that disagreed with me last week on that would probably agree with me this week because we're all evolving into, this is a real thing. And, um, myself included. And I, I, I think that the call made by the sheriff and the public health officer in this regard is, is good. It, again, it's temporary. It's going to be one of the first things we open back up. I, I'm convinced of that. But for now, it has to be all or nothing. We can't have, have selective enforcement and have our guys out there, uh, increasing their chance of exposure by having them go out and check everybody's driver's licenses and, and, uh, in the field interrogations like that.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Uh, any other supervisors at this point? Supervisor Sabatier, go ahead.
Thank you, and I, I agree with the comments made by Supervisor Brown. I did respond to Mr. Dobrowski, and I just wanted to make the same statement here. Um, if we open it up and we look at whether you have a residential or non-residential, we already messed everything up because we allowed them to come in. We gave them the opportunity to come here. The idea is, we don't want people moving around. If you're here, we have to check your sticker, it's too late. So we need to say, "No, you can't come here to do boating or fishing or things like that," which unfortunately also means that our locals can't do boating or fishing. Uh, but this is a way to make sure that we don't get the traffic coming into our community like it was showing about a week ago, uh, where our docks were filled with people from out of town, uh, as well as locals. And so I think this is the right decision, and I think this is, the idea is stop populations moving from place to place, which is how things get spread.
Thank you. Bruno. Uh, Supervisor Scott, Supervisor Crandall? Go ahead, Supervisor Crandall.
There we go. Sorry, I keep pressing the button on there. Uh, you know, Sergeant Dobrowski brings up many key points, and I'm echoing again, but, you know, I, I understand his sentiments and, uh, you know, me being in, in the Army as well. It sounds like a, a directive that an officer gives to his soldiers, and we're like, "What is this about?" But the bottom line is, we don't have the resources at this time, um, to, to be able to test, to be able to care for anyone that carries this. I talked about yesterday in a meeting we had, the Blue, on the Blue Collar Committee, um, in a recent, um, I went to Trezorco Pizza, and, um, the employees had a really rough day, and were telling me about how hard it was to deal with out-of-towners who were calling us rednecks and hillbillies and things like that. And they were, they weren't, they were upset that they weren't getting served alcohol, and they weren't allowed to sit down. And it's like, these folks are coming from the Bay Area, and they're coming here to have like a playground. And they think that just because we're a rural area, w, w, like, we're not, w, w, I guess we're not under the same standards that they are or something like that. And so for, for me, it's that mentality that we're trying to protect him from, you know, and, and other, and our other community members. And so, I, you know, I, I just, I just have to echo what the other gentleman said, the other supervisor said. But I just wanted to put that key component into it because that really made me upset for the business owners and the employees there that had to deal with that type of berating and, and, and that type of mentality. Um, and, and this is a very serious issue. I mean, you could see this, this, uh, the, the numbers exponentially grow around us, thank goodness. We're still like the county, when you look at the, um, the map, you see all of these surrounding counties getting cases, and we're still in the middle with zero. And, I mean, I understand we have so many tests, but, you know, the fact that we're, we're testing when people have the symptoms, you know, and once we get the resources to be able to test more people, we'll be able to, um, test the essential workers and test the IHSS workers. But that's until we can get those resources. And so, you know, not to beat it, you know, a dead horse, I just want to make that comment so that people know.
Thank you. Uh, Brian, go ahead, Sheriff.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so I just want to remind, we, we started to do that. We, uh, the, the first act, shot, we took it this was to shut it down for anybody that didn't have any local Quagga Nestle stickers and stop the issuance of, uh, non-resident Quagga Nestle stickers. And we saw the explosion of activity. Uh, I think what the color comment, um, took into consideration is that, uh, nobody in Lake County has coronavirus. Um, that's not the case. The case is that we don't have any confirmed cases. There are very likely cases that are out there, and when you have an explosion of activity out on the lake, you're having it intermingling. People, people are not calling the social distancing on a boat. You're not staying six feet away from, from somebody at all times while you're on a boat. And the idea of this is to stop the spread of the coronavirus. So we saw a, a pretty significant increase in activity, and the closure of the lake was in response to that. The other thing, as far as, um, uh, staffing and law enforcement, we have one full-time person that works on the lake a year round. The rest of that staff is done by, uh, retired new attendants, uh, extra help employees that just work part of the time. Uh, part of what we're planning in, in the, uh, in our preparations is to plan for the case where, uh, law enforcement, first responders do have some confirmed tests. We're out there, we're exposed, um, not quite as much as healthcare workers, but we're exposed, uh, more than just about anybody. And we're taking into consideration that we're likely to have some positive tests as these things start to show up. Our workforce to replace them is going to consist of those extra help employees. So exposing them, uh, during a time when we shouldn't keep them separate and in a reserve status, uh, is, doesn't make any sense. So I get it. I want to get out there on the lake, too. I want, you know, everybody wants this, and as I was stating before, this is a temporary measure. It will be one of the first things that gets released. It's just necessary for now.
Thank you, Sheriff. Can I add one more thing?
Go ahead, Eddie.
Yes, uh, just, Port Sheriff Martin, you know, in other, in other instances, when we have, um, you know, a, a, a situation like a fire or whatnot, we're able to call on Sonoma County or Solano County to get additional help. They're tending to their people right, to their counties right now. So it's not, I don't think there's a capability. Am I correct, Sheriff Martin?
That's right. Mutual aid, um, you know, the comparison would be, you're in the fires, Lake County's got a fire, maybe there's a couple others. Um, this is statewide. There's not, there's not jurisdictions that have a, uh, some surplus people to call up and help us out here. That's just, I, I don't see that happening.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Eddie. Uh, Supervisor Scott, do you have any? Okay.
Nothing that hasn't already been said. I, I believe Dr. Pace and the sheriff are doing an amazing job, and, um, I didn't like seeing the lake closed, but it was something that we necessarily had to do.
All right. Thank you, Tina. Yeah, you know, obviously I echo everything that's been said at this point, obviously. We're doing exactly what Brian and Dr. Pace and everybody else said. We're attempting to slow the spread of this virus as it makes its way, its way here. We know it's painful. We know it's frustrating. Just be patient and, um, pay attention. Getting as much information out as possible. I know Dr. Pace has a town hall tonight, and we'll have weekly updates here, and that's why we're doing it. Keep the public informed and to keep moving through this process as it comes through the county. So, thank you, everyone. Um, Carol, uh, I know you probably said you have more public comment. If we could do our best, even with ourselves, to keep it to three minutes, um, that would be great.
Okay, um, Mr. Chair, the next piece of public comment, and I believe I have, um, three or four more, um, before we wrap up this item. So, um, the next one is, um, from, it comes to you from Candace Brown. She says, "Good morning. I hope this email finds you and your families feeling well and sane during this stressful time in our lives. I do have concerns about the lack of testing in our community as our country is progressing further into this pandemic. No known cases in Lake County is giving a huge false sense of security to so many of our community members. I do not feel like enough information is being told or stressed to our community about the lack of testing and the connection between that resulting to the no known cases. It might be obvious to you, and it's very obvious to myself, the connection, but as continually hear others around me, it's not so obvious to many others around us. Members in our, in our community say they feel safe going out, and they are not understanding the entire picture. I hope you will take some time and stress to our communities a little more about this situation moving forward. Thank you for your time, Candace Brown."
Thank you, Carol. Um, Dr. Pace, would you like to address just your specific issue, just on testing and...
Sure. Uh, well, I mean, it's, as I was saying before, but I think the point is, is that we don't have adequate testing. We don't, um, we don't know for sure that there's not virus out there. And, and I'm assuming it will, if it's not there already, it will get into the community. And in the early phases, we don't necessarily know by the surge of, uh, increased illness and stuff that, um, that Supervisor Sabatier was referring to. Um, until, until the tests start turning positive or until we start seeing a lot more sick people, we are, are, are a little bit working in the dark. And so I totally agree with the person who sent in that question, that, uh, we don't want people to have a false sense of security, um, because it's really, really important at this point to shelter in place, to wash your hands, to do all the disinfecting that we're talking about. I read something, uh, yesterday about, um, a situation where there was a choir in Washington State where they decided, it was early in the situ, and early in the crisis up there where nobody was feeling sick. It was a big choir, a hundred and twenty people or something. And, uh, they decided, because everybody was feeling a little stressed, that they would come together and, um, go ahead and practice the ones that wanted to come. So maybe sixty of them came. Everybody that was there was healthy, they didn't have any symptoms. And, um, but within three days, several of them have gotten sick. I think fifteen or twenty of them now have the virus. A couple of them have passed away, and three or four of them are in the hospital now. And that was all, all came after because they were at the early stage where somebody was sick and was spreading the virus, but no, no, they didn't, they didn't have any symptoms at that point. So I think the, the, the person who asked this question is, is absolutely right, that we don't know. It's probably out there. If it's not there today, it will be in a couple of days. And the important thing is for everybody to take the, those precautions that they can at this point to prevent it from, eh, from going through the community, especially if you're in the vulnerable groups or if you have somebody in your household that's, that's older or has chronic medical conditions, because those are the people that are really at risk.
Okay, Dr. Pace, thank you very much. And I think, uh, one thing, um, obviously, I think too, and there are conflicting messages, I think coming from the federal government for, about testing. Uh, the availability at this point is very limited. Uh, will be increasing over the next few weeks. And, um, you know, I know Dr. Pace, uh, i- is working hard to make sure to improve that. So I want to thank that, uh, constituent for the question, uh, but we are, uh, on the same page. We think it may be here, uh, we just don't have the test yet, um, and we're trying to curb that as it comes into the county. Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier. Go ahead, Bruno.
Sorry, my mute button wasn't showing up for me.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I, I want to say that nothing would be easier for us to enforce shelter in place by showing that we have the virus here. But we're not going to lie and say that we have test results that we don't have by making numbers to get people to follow the directions. Uh, we've given directions, the state's given directions, the federal government's given directions. If you're still not listening, then I don't know what else we can do to make you really listen that this is a serious matter. Uh, but we're going with facts, and we're going with data. And right now, uh, according to Dr. Pace and all our hospitals, we have not received any positive results from these tests that we've made. Uh, and that's all that we can go on.
Thank you, Bruno. Okay, Carol.
Okay, Mr. Chair, um, your next one, just a moment here, um, this comes from Ronald Botello, MD. And his question is, "Would it be possible to get updates on what the local hospitals are currently seeing for patient care, the laboratory capabilities, and if drive-through locations are planned as in Hayward?" and if drive-through locations are planned as in Hayward, and some synopsis of the current state of the virus in Lake County?"
Okay, Doctor.
I think I've answered most of those. I think the, uh, so basically, just a quick overview, the, the synopsis is, it's definitely, uh, increasing in the local, in the re, in surrounding areas. We're not seeing it in the community yet. We're not seeing a, a big rise in ER visits, at least from the last contact I had, which was a, a day or two ago with the hospitals. Um, the, uh, drive-through testing in Hayward, the, um, that was a, a, a very interesting experiment that had mixed results. But one of the things is the city of Hayward actually paid five hundred thousand dollars to get an arrangement with that testing company to set that up. And it was done sort of outside of public health. And so there's been some problems in terms of getting results back to people in a timely fashion and people getting proper counseling. But it required a lot of upfront money that, you know, we just don't have up here. And, uh, that's why we're trying to sort of piece it together the way we are so that we can get these things, um, for much lower cost.
The budget thing.
Uh, and the way we're trying to do this is because of the way the community's laid out, we want to just go to people's homes instead of having sick people come out of their house and go out into the community. We'd rather they stay home and that we try to go and help them get the test. So, the way to get the tests at this point are to talk to your medical provider. If they feel like that, uh, that's a, a good idea for you, that it's, uh, that it might be useful, then they can contact us and we can try to get something going in the next couple of days. There is no real role at this point for, one of the, one of the questions earlier was, um, should somebody get tested even if they're not sick? And there's really no role for that at this point that we're aware of. The only people, really from the, the national criteria, the only people that are getting tested are people that are very, very sick, or they have a, um, a contact with a known case, or they're like a healthcare worker or in a congregate living situation. We are wanting to expand that to include people that are, um, ill with respiratory sickness, but not sick enough to have to be hospitalized, because that's sort of the, the course of the illnesses is the early, the early phase of it looks like that, and then it can get a lot worse. And if we know that, if we can pick those people up early on, we can isolate them and try to stop it from getting through the whole community. So, um, I think that was all the questions, the pieces of that.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Pace.
Okay, Mr. Chair, um, two more. Um, this one comes from Cheryl Johns, County employee in IT, and she is asking if public health can begin publishing a text version of the stats they include in their daily dashboard. Um, and that way it would be ADA compliant and everyone has access to the information.
Okay.
Okay. And last one, and I believe this one goes back to, well, it, it covers the entire, um, shelter-in-place order. I thought maybe it was specific to the voting question. This one comes from Casey Frack Sayavam, and the question is, "Will this ban," meaning no fishing, VRBO, Airbnb, be extended to April thirtieth?"
That's a great question. Go ahead, Supervisor Pace.
Well, yeah, I, I appreciate, uh, that question, because that was one of the things I, I realized I hadn't really talked about is what, wha- what are we looking at in the future here? And, um, you know, that all really depends on what, how this thing unfolds. And, uh, we're still, it looks like we're still in the early stages. We're seeing what's happening in New York, which is very, very concerning. We're seeing what's happening in the Bay Area, which is increasing, but maybe not as bad as we thought it might have been, which is probably a result of this, um, the shelter-in-place and the restrictions that we're putting in place. And now here, we're not seeing it here yet. So, what happens over the next couple of weeks is going to be very, very important. Um, I suspect it's probably going to worsen, and, uh, we'll probably want to keep things in place until things are starting to improve. But then what happens? You know, say things are starting to improve, do we back everything away right away? Probably not. We're probably going to want to be selective about what gets, wha- what gets restored first. You know, what are the activities that we can start doing first? And so the earlier question about maybe locals using the lake, but not out-of-towners, if we can figure out a way to do that, that would be one thing. You know, what to do with the schools, what to, all these different pieces will probably, it's probably not going to be, like, we basically shut everything down pretty much in a very short period of time. Probably the way it'll look on the back end is that we start, uh, reintroducing certain activities and see how it goes. Do we start seeing a rise in cases that we can't manage? Or are we able to manage okay? Do we have better testing so that we can target people that are actually sick and really kind of isolate them and then let other activities go forward? You know, so there's, uh, there's just too many unknowns at this point to know. But, um, we're prepared to extend it as long as we need to, to keep people safe and to prevent the medical facilities to be overwhelmed. I'm really hoping that we get more testing capability. We learn a little more about what, how this is going to, um, what the activity of the virus is going to be. And then, you know, within, I don't know, maybe a month or so, that we can start, um, uh, slowly opening the door to certain activities and start beginning to get back to normal. That's the hope. Hopefully before the economic ac, you know, problems just get too overwhelming. But, um, that's, that's the hope.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Dr. Moak.
One of these days.
Yeah. Um, so along those same lines, I, I've had conversations with, uh, with Dr. Pace and, and, uh, EJ was on the call with us yesterday on the Blue Collar Committee. We talked about that, not just for, you know, voting and, you know, other activities, but the businesses. And, you know, we're already, you know, looking at possibilities of how we can, uh, incrementally start letting people back in business if they provide a plan. And, uh, I know Dr. Pace was working with the real estate folks yesterday and, uh, trying to get them, you know, to, uh, adopt certain practices that were safe and still allow them to, to continue their operation. And we'll continue to do that. And the, the business community is very interested in that. They're actually working within themselves to come up with parameters and plans that they can submit, because they're, you know, they want to be in business, but they also take this really serious. They don't want to, um, they don't want to take a chance of, of, uh, of hurting or, you know, injuring through, through this disease, any of their employees or the public. So, uh, it, you know, the folks that we're talking to are very, very conscientious of that. And, and I think, um, you know, as we, as we move forward, we anticipate everything's going to be kind of business as it is right now until the thirtieth. But there are going to be some areas that, that we're going to be able to see different exceptions, not because, um, we think that they, they deserve exceptions other than they're, they're offering safe practices that, uh, that will allow them to stay in business, because that is an important part of our, our community.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Brown. Um, you know, I just, uh, obviously, I appreciate that conversation at this point. Um, but this is early in the battle here. And, um, I hope every conversation that's happening is always, like we've said, putting this, the safety of the public and the individuals operating these businesses and other things, number one. Um, uh, we are doing the weekly reports. Everyone wants to be back in business. But it's going to be a long-term battle here, I think. Uh, April thirtieth, I think, is the date at this point that has been extended by the federal government. I don't know, uh, what, uh, I don't have the exact date. Maybe you can give me that, uh, Dr. Pace, for the governor's order at this point and where that's at. But, um, I really appreciate you being very clear that we'd be taking this by a weekly basis. Uh, Bruno hit it right on the head. It'd be data and also what's happening at our hospitals, um, as we move forward with any processes where we're opening up anything. You know, a couple weeks ago, that was coming down from the federal government about, oh, we're going to open up by Easter. Uh, he's been convinced, uh, at least that the, the president has that this is not the opportunity or the time to be talking about those things, seeing where we're at. So hopefully we definitely, uh, continue, because we don't want to give mixed messages out to our community that we're thinking about opening this thing up earlier, uh, than we need to. So, I, I just, I, I'm going to, I will always say that, number one. Bruno, go ahead. Supervisor Sabate.
I, I, I do want to say something, because we see it and the public sees it, and we keep telling them that unless you meet this specific criteria, you're not going to get tested. And that comes from the CDC, uh, and it's, it's a, um, a guideline that we have to follow. Unfortunately, we all see it on television where people are getting tested and they're just fine, like some of our senators, some of our basketball players in the NBA. And, and it's frustrating from our position to see that, because we are trying to get as many tests as possible. And we're also trying to adhere to the rules and regulations that are being told to us we need to follow. But it's obvious when you look at the news and you see who else is being tested, that that's not necessarily the case for everyone. So I just want to say, I share that frustration with the rest of the public. Uh, and I know that Dr. Pace has increased the number of tests and has continuously had conversations to get more tests. And, uh, I support him in what he's doing. And I, uh, I've tried contacting our federal representatives. Uh, they gave me the same guidelines and the same information. And unfortunately, um, we're, we're, I'd love to see more, but, uh, there, there's definitely stuck between a rock and a hard place. And, uh, always looking for Dr. Pace for guidance to help me know what I can do to get, get things changed. But, uh, I, I feel the frustration from the public, which is why they have those questions about testing.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabate. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, so I, further clarification, and I, I appreciate your, your, uh, comments, Moak, but I want to further add, I should have, you know, I, I can't make assumptions that everybody's getting the same information that I'm getting and that we're, you know, we're getting, we're getting bombarded with a lot of stuff. The conversation about, you know, uh, the real estate business came as a result of the governor's directive on Saturday. He changed it from non-essential to essential with a plan in place. So this isn't something that we're just doing to accommodate, uh, realtors in our area. This is something that the governor had actually done. So, so we were just basically, um, you know, looking at it from that perspective. So it's not, it's not, you know, we're trying to identify certain businesses that, that, you know, are lobbying us harder than others. That's not the case. It's, it's, uh, actually coming up. The, the governor did the same thing with gun stores. You know, they, they're, they were supposed to close down, and then he just, uh, issued a directive, I think it was yesterday, or maybe the day before, but it was within the last couple of days, saying that gun stores were now essential and could open up. So, so it's, it's a moving target, obviously, but that's where that conversation came from.
Yeah, well, just to respond once again, yeah, we got that email, saw it forwarded to, uh, from the real estate industry. So I know they quoted stuff from the governor, CISA and other things. Uh, what I'm talking about is the messaging out to, um, all the businesses. That's, that's what I was talking about. Understand that coming down from the governor. And just from my understanding too, and you can confirm this, Dr. Pace, the governor can order what he wants. And we need to follow minimum standards to that level. But to protect our community, we could always go more stringent than the governor, um, if we need to, uh, to protect our own residents. And my, my comments about opening up the businesses, just like last week, being very clear in what we're trying to say here, um, there was a comment made last week that started a whole chain of emails. And someone might just catch, oh, they're going to open the businesses. And then next thing you know, we got a bunch of emails. So, just trying to clarify on those issues. I appreciate your clarification, Supervisor Brown. Uh, but just so, uh, over the next few weeks, because I know everybody's, uh, stress levels are very high, businesses want to get back open, that we just clarify our statements. And that's all I was attempting to do as we move forward with this process and messaging to the community.
Yeah, and you're, you, that's a good point, because I also want to clarify something if I could. The comments, the conversation that we had, and EJ was on, on the call, it's not about coming up with a plan where we can open up right now. Would, if, if on the thirtieth, they're allowed to open, or whatever, whatever day that, uh, Dr. Pace and the governor and everybody above us, um, deems, uh, necessary, these folks want to have a plan in place then. They don't want to wait for us. It's, you know, just look at the, the, you know, some of the other plans that the government has developed. It takes a lot of time. It's much easier for the industry to develop, develop a standard where they police themselves, and then it's accepted by, by, uh, Dr. Pace or us or whatever. But it's not something that's going to happen overnight, but they want to have something in place and ready to go when it is time that they can open up. They don't want to wait until then to then adopt the plan. So I think that's, that's responsible.
Absolutely. The day you close your business, you should have had a reopening plan in place. I go, I very completely, being a business owner, and that's always forward thinking that should be happening.
Yeah, that's easy to say, except nobody's ever had to close their business to this regard. So I doubt anybody had a complete plan. I don't know anybody that's had a plan the day they closed on exactly how they would open back up, so.
Okay. Uh, Supervisor, uh, Crandall?
Yes, I just, yeah, there, there was a very good meeting to be a part of, the Blue Collar, uh, committee meeting. Um, what I liked about it is they had a lot of solutions. They did a lot of research. They're, they're willing to put forth effort to make sure that we could do something in order to be ready, to be proactive. Once, once things hit, um, once we start reopening and once we start allowing, uh, the numbers go down, things like that, they'll have, uh, they'll have their, uh, plan in place. And possibly we can start working with the, uh, not just county government, but, uh, state government to, uh, put some, some, uh, initiatives in place to be able to conduct business. But one of the things I, I emphasized, I think, a couple of weeks back, and I'd like to reemphasize it, you know, we still have zero, zero, um, number right now. And, and, and not saying that's how it's always going to be. But I, I want to, I want to just, we always talk about what makes Lake County special. We know it. We live here. But just when this thing finally passes over, because it will, we're going to be able, if we keep doing what we're doing and we, we keep, um, being proactive, we're going to be able to emphasize how, uh, our numbers were low. And if we can keep those numbers low, that could be a, a beacon of how we can, you know, show how special Lake County is. And folks will want to come here. We always talk about economic development. Well, it's, it's like protecting y- your golden egg, if you will. Let's keep doing that. So just.
Thank you, Supervisor Crandall. Okay, any more public comment on this, uh, this item? Carol?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. You have more people in the room they want to ask, though?
All right, we'll go ahead and open it up to public input. Anybody in the room?
I don't have anybody with a raised hand on my side.
Okay, thank you very much, Jake. Okay, Dr. Pace, would you like to finish with anything?
Well, thanks. You know, I mean, I think, uh, I appreciate all this discussion and the, and the public input, because people are obviously thinking about this and really wrestling with it. And, um, you know, I think we're in a very unique spot right now where there's a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, the infection in the neighboring counties. We've been able to, uh, well, we haven't found any here yet, and it doesn't really look like it's here in the same way it is in the other areas. Right now, all, if you look at the map that shows the counties that have COVID in it, we're, all the counties around us are in red and we're in white. And, um, so I think that speaks to how much effort's been put into really trying to slow things down and keep us safe. And I think it's, um, particularly important because of the, you know, the, the medical resource is being on the low side here of just how we would be able to respond to it. So, I really appreciate all the effort that's been going in from the law enforcement to the environmental health people, to the leadership in the county, to all the folks out there. And I know it's frustrating not to get on the lake, but it's really, I think, uh, may really pay out in the long run for us in terms of saving lives and saving a lot of, a lot of human suffering. And then once it, once the cases do start coming in, we're going to have a whole different strategy on how we're approaching it. And I really, I want to encourage the community to be supportive of it as much as they can and really help us try to keep the well people and the sick people away from each other and really adhere to the, to the proper protection to keep people well and to slow down the spread. So, um, yeah, that's basically what I want to say. Thanks.
All right, Dr. Pace, thank you very much. With the board will move to our, um, item seven point three. Consideration of letter the Governor Newsom asking to suspend legislation that would affect private enterprise and jobs. So Supervisor Brown?
So, thank you, uh, Moak. This is actually seven point two, um.
Oh, I saw, yeah, it is.
That's, that's right. I just wanted to, want to make sure it was right for, for John, I don't know, whoever. So, uh, thank you for that. And I, you know, as, uh, as we've talked about the business community and all that, it's, um, you know, it takes a, it takes a while, the process takes a while for, for government to get active. So I think this is timely now so that we can start, they can start looking at it, uh, at the state level. Um, this, this, um, you know, I wrote this letter and I forwarded it on to a few other counties. They're very interested in, in, uh, this. And, um, once, the first letter that I, that I sent to the board, the first- And, um, once, the first letter that I, that I sent to the board, the first draft, was basically a compilation of input from the Chamber of Commerce, the Farm Bureau and other entities. And, uh, and then I, um, uh, Bruno contacted me and, and, uh, he had looked up some of these bills that were actually dead. And so he and I went through them yesterday and we actually identified many of these that were already dead, so they were, they weren't even, uh, uh, an issue currently. So I modified the letter and I think you should have that. I can actually go through the changes if, if the board would like. And then, uh, also at suggestion of, of Bruno, I, uh, contacted the North Coast Builders Exchange to discuss some, maybe some legislation that's recently affected the building industry. So I added a paragraph in there. They didn't have specific legislation numbers at the time, but, but I, uh, I added a paragraph that, uh, would cover them generally, but I think it's, it's, uh, specific enough to get the point across. Um, the, the changes that I made were, we, we eliminated everything except for Assembly Bills 673, uh, and I put the author Correio, uh, 725 Wick, 5 Gonzalez, 790 Levine, 1066 Gonzalez, Bonta Garcia, Hernandez, Jones Sawyer, uh, McCarty Thurman, and Senate Bill 10 Hertzberg, 88 was, um, uh, the ground, let's see, Groundwater Management Act. What was the, what's the S for Bruno? Safe, Safe Groundwater?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, Safe Groundwater Management Act. It was actually a compilation of several, um, several bills that were, that were tied into one and that's 88. And then 850 and LEVA. Um, and additionally, the, um, the left, the paragraph that I added for the building industry states, additionally, we would ask that you consider reviewing recent changes to codes as it relates to the building industry. It is important that we allow businesses related to the building trades to continue as long as safe practices are implemented. As we all know, many of these workers are transient and without the ability to continue working, will likely move to a state that will allow them to work. Commercial and residential construction is an essential part of our economy and as you have rightly, rightfully placed housing as a high priority for your administration, there's never been a more opportune time to further that agenda. Um, you know, we need to keep things going and whether it be, you know, the minute this, uh, this thing's lifted, but there's a lot of jobs at stake. And I'm not asking that, the other, uh, change that I made was in, instead of just suspension, I'm asking that they defer, reconsider or suspend. I'm not asking that anything be overturned. And I know, uh, Bruno brought this up and some others may have the concern on SB 10 because that's the Fail Reform Act and the perception of a conflict. There is no conflict, uh, with me. I make not one nickel off of the decision to add this in here. And that's because, um, it has not been enacted, uh, in Lake County. It has been enacted in Los Angeles, San Francisco, San Mateo, Santa Clara, many other counties, but it needs to be, um, needs to be lifted and give people a chance in, within the state to actually work and continue to make, uh, contribution to, uh, to the counties and the, and the state. Um, there's a, for, to further that, it's a, it's a, uh, referendum that's on the ballot for November. So after the referendum, it's, it becomes, uh, law one way or the other, so it really makes no difference. So I just wanted to clear that up right now. There's not, uh, not one ounce, one penny of conflict, uh, just because I'm one of, of 3,500 or 10,000 employees in total throughout the state. So, um, I'm asking that the board consider that and I'm asking that you, uh, if you have any that you're, you're aware of that I've missed, that I would ask that they be considered to be added as well. You're, you're on mute, Mo.
Supervisor Shabatia, go ahead.
Uh, I did appreciate having the, uh, ability to have that conversation with Supervisor Brown yesterday. Uh, we did changes so that it was more of a, uh, or Supervisor Brown changed it, uh, to be more, uh, based on the rules that had been passed or rules that are still going through the motions of potentially being passed in the future. Uh, I agree, and I've said this before, that we need to focus on COVID-19 today, but also make sure we look out six months or further into the future so that we don't stop everything. Um, but the main focus definitely needs to be here today as to what's, uh, happening on the ground level for COVID-19. Um, I don't have an issue with sending a letter to the governor, letting him know that we are, uh, concerned about the future of the economy. I think there's not one person in this room that is not concerned about the future of the economy. Uh, I know that just between, um, myself and Supervisor Brown, uh, we would disagree on certain bills that were left on there. Um, but at the same time, I don't think this is a, uh, I think this is a letter that we should look at and, and discuss and review, uh, and consider sending. Uh, cause I think it's, uh, in the long run, if we aim at specific bills, uh, like the SB 88 adds a whole lot of work onto, uh, uh, government and adds a whole lot more cost to government, where right now we need to be, uh, looking at our costs and looking at our activities to make sure that they're aimed at helping people. Um, and so we know that that's a bit of a burden. It's been discussed at RCRC about, uh, I don't think there's one county that loves SB 88. Uh, they're looking at potential changes right now in the state government, uh, but nothing has, uh, uh, materialized thus far. Um, I think that, uh, things like AB 5, there's some positives that have come out of it, there's some negatives that have come out of it. Uh, even the, uh, author Gonzalez, and again, this came through, uh, during an RCRC meeting that I attended, even the author is looking at reviewing, uh, some of these things for AB 5. So I think some of these do have merit to say, hey, we're gonna be in a real big hole when it's happened, uh, when this is all over with. And what better way to reunite the economy than maybe alter, halt or suspend some of these, uh, bills? Uh, again, uh, as Supervisor Brown mentioned, I did have a conversation with him about SB 10. Uh, I would like to have, I, I'm gonna be honest, I don't understand the total repercussions for the county. Uh, and I know that Supervisor Brown is looking more at this from a statewide perspective than just a county perspective. Uh, but I would like to have a discussion with our, uh, probation, with our sheriff and with our district attorneys to see how will SB 10 truly impact, uh, the county of Lake? What is our, our cost, uh, analysis? Are we gonna lose? Are we gonna gain? Would, I, I just, I can't, uh, make those, uh, uh, those calls on my own with the knowledge that I have. Uh, but other than that, I do appreciate that it was, uh, changed. I did offer that, uh, we look at the building code. I had already made it public. Do we have to go with these building codes? Uh, we all know PG&E is gonna change the time, so that solar panels don't really benefit a house as much as a, uh, battery would from now on. Uh, so having a, um, legislation that forces you to put solar panels when it's not gonna benefit you in the future, uh, yes, it sounds good, it feels good, it's green, but financially you're paying off a solar panel and now still paying off PG&E at the same time. So it's just, uh, there, there's certain things that maybe we can say, hold on and let, let's review these things. Um, and I think it's a good thing that we, uh, keep our eye on the ball, which, uh, the economy is very important to us and again, simultaneously keeping track of what's happening today with, uh, COVID-19 as well.
Okay. Supervisor Scott or Supervisor Crandall?
Um, for me, since, um, I didn't, I didn't realize there was changes till just now, um, in the letter. I did a lot of research on the different bills that were put in the, the original letter. I wouldn't be prepared today to approve a letter to go forward. Um, I do think it's, it's a good idea that we're, we're looking at these and, um, trying to figure out what we could do to better our economy after we get through this. But, um, right now, I'm, I'm not prepared to, um, approve a letter.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Brown?
So, so yeah, the, like I said, the, uh, the amendments came about yesterday as, uh, Bruno and I were working on them. Uh, they were sent early this morning. Um, sorry you didn't get it till now. Um, I, I think we need to move forward. I don't think, um, I think the business community needs to know that we're sticking up for them. And, you know, unless you're, unless there's a bill in there, I mean, you, you said you researched all of them, there, there's no new bills added. So there's only the bills that were in there, the, uh, the original letter, less a few. So there's nothing additional. So if you researched those, then, then you've already had an opportunity to look at the bills that are actually in there. There's nothing added additionally. Um, Bruno's got his finger up, so he's giving me the finger.
Supervisor Shabatia, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, we did add 1066 based on the Farm Bureau's, um, uh, feedback.
I, okay, yeah, I'd actually turned that in, uh, originally, but I don't think it was put in the original letter that, uh, that staff sent out, so yeah. So, um, so anyway, I, I think, you know, I'm, I think I'm ready to move on, on this, but I wanna hear what the rest of the board says.
Supervisor Crandall?
I, uh, I haven't, I haven't really had a chance to research all of these bills just yet. Um, and so I just, I do wanna move forward, but at the same time, I don't want to make a decision on something I haven't researched.
Yeah, um, from my point of view, there is, uh, some more research I think that needs to be done. Obviously, there were quite a few bills in there. As far as the revamp letter, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm in the same, uh, boat at this time also. And that has nothing to do with supporting business. I know, uh, the information to get out there, I, I think the most good thing we can do is get out the stimulus package, the opportunities through SBA loans, other opportunities at this point could be, uh, a short pause as we move forward, um, through this. There's still a lot of regulations and dissemination of information is coming down from the federal government on that. Uh, but it does look like there's going to be a hearty package for SBA loans and other things for business owners, uh, to help through this situation, keeping people working and also moving forward. And I think the long-term goal of getting a letter out would be very beneficial. I just, I, I'm in the same place at this point. Could have one more week to review, get it on next week's agenda, uh, work through those questions, uh, and do some more research. That's, I, I would feel better doing that also. So it's Supervisor Shabatia?
So, um, Supervisor Brown, I'm gonna let people know a little bit more of our conversation cause you did offer an alternative letter that you sent to me.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not offering that at this point. So if you wanna offer it, that's up to you, but I'm not gonna offer a watered-down version with no, uh, bills in there. I think we need to be specific and, you know, we can be wishy-washy on this and pretend that, that we care and we can actually do the research. And I'm okay with doing it for a month, cause I know you guys will, will look it over. I think that's worthwhile. Um, I, you know, and I, I, you know, Bruno did this, did the research, uh, I did some of it, I did more of it, actually I talked to him. So that actually was very helpful to get the letter out. So, um, yes, if you guys need another week to, to review that, I, I have no problem with it. I just know that, uh, we need to, we need to get moving on this stuff because, um, this is the kinda stuff that, that caught, you know, once the governor gets it, then they're gonna review it or he's gonna throw it in the garbage. I hope not. Or, uh, you know, we've got, uh, Sonoma County, uh, Humboldt, Del Norte and, uh, the supervisor from Humboldt County who's one of the officers, I believe, at RCRC is prepared to take this to RCRC. They're, they're ready to go with it. And I said, hold on to it till we see how our board does. So I know there's a lot of, uh, a lot of counties that are interested in doing this. So I think, um, you know, putting it off for a week is not the end of the world, but I think we need to, we need to get moving on getting our business. And I, I appreciate all the, all the SBA loans and all the government free cheese and all that kinda stuff, but the people that I deal with and myself and other people that are, that have been in business with their own capital and they're, you know, they've invested everything they've owned in this, do not want that. They wanna just be working. And I think that's a fair thing to do and, um, you know, for, for everything that they get back, somebody's paying for that. And, you know, the reality is, uh, there, you can't, you can't sustain, uh, society by, um, by, you know, giving out free money to businesses that could otherwise be working. But yeah, you have to put it off for another week.
And so I, I, uh, with bringing up the previous letter, which I had the same complaint, so I'm glad that Supervisor Brown still feels the same about it. I thought, I thought it was watered down as well. I think that we do need to have some specifics. Our outfit's too wide open. There's so many, uh, bills that have passed in the past two years. It'd be best if we sent a letter with some specifics. Uh, I'm okay with, uh, uh, moving for a, a week. Um, and, uh, you know, I'm gonna be honest, it's pretty easy to find these, uh, these bills online and there are good summaries available, uh, that are online. So, uh, I think a week's worth of, uh, notice and then knowing what the bills are today, uh, will provide that time for all of us to be able to do the research and see what is going on. Uh, I think that we need to be twofold though in our thought process. One is to think about business, but two is to think about the workers. And, and some of these bills may benefit businesses more than workers. Some of these bills may benefit more workers than businesses. And I think that we need to be twofold in, in looking at how we want to analyze these bills and which ones we think can be put on hold or can be, uh, reviewed or altered, uh, to make sure that we're getting the greatest benefit of these bills for the future of our economy.
Thank you Bruno. Supervisor Brown?
Um, so I, I would also encourage the board, you know, the other board members, all of you actually, I know Bruno's researched a lot of this, but if you see any other, uh, bills that you think were relevant to this discussion, I would invite any of those to be included. But I would like to make one comment to, um, to Bruno's comments is that you can't have workers without businesses. So it's just, that's the way it is. It's not, you know, sometimes we lose, we lose sight of that as we sit here in government and get paid to dictate over those who don't get paid, which ironically, if they don't get paid, we don't get paid. Cause they're the ones paying our bills. So we gotta keep that in mind always.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be prepared to make a decision next week. Like I said, I just wanna make sure I researched a little more and I will be prepared to make a decision next week. And if we wanted to even have a special meeting to discuss this before that, I'd be, I'd just need a day or two, not even that. So I just wanna be able to research it better. Um, and I apologize for not having a better research of it now. Um, so just wanted to say that.
Well, from my point of view, obviously, um, having multiple businesses and large numbers of workers, those are the ones I always think about, um, as we move through this process. Um, I want no more to be back in business for all of our businesses and our total investments into this community and this county. And, um, you know, think about it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Um, as we move forward, I think any letter we put together, we wanna make sure, uh, that we get the most bang for the buck on this thing. Asking for one more week to review, um, I think is where we're going with it, is definitely we'll have that done. And maybe some things other need to be added. But also as we move through this process, as we know with business, as we knew it before COVID-19, may be completely different. And it may be completely different for a while. Um, so thinking about those things as we move forward to draft the letter to the governor's office, I wanna make sure that have the proper research, we have the right bills and we are moving in the right direction. So those are my thoughts on it. But ultimately, um, you know, it sounds like we're moving to, to next week. So, um, Carol, uh, or Jake, is there any public input on item 7.2?
Mr. Chair, I do have public input that has come in via email.
Okay.
Uh, so the first of which comes to you from Terry Logston, Environmental and Natural Resources Director at Scotts Valley Band of Homo Indians. Um, she says, while the Scotts Valley Band of Homo Indians is pleased to see forward-looking actions under consideration by your board to assist in rebuilding the economy once the threat from COVID-19 passes, we do not believe these actions should be at the expense of our environmental and human well-being protection. Some of the legislation outlined in the letter for your consideration have been enacted or proposed to protect the environment, which is of utmost concern for Scotts Valley, such as AB 40, which will require the California Air Resources Board to develop a strategy to ensure that all passenger and light duty vehicle sales are zero emissions by 2040. SB 44, which also requires CARB, that's the California Air Resources Board, to develop a strategy to reduce all motor vehicle emissions by 40% by 2030 and 80% by 2050, including diesel medium and heavy duty trucks. We believe, wow, the view changed, okay.
Yeah, the view just changed, yeah.
Okay, but we're still connected, yes? Jake, are we still good?
Yeah, you're still good, sorry.
Okay, thank you. We believe that not only will these measures protect the environment of our tribal members, these measures will also encourage new business models and production that will help in building the economy. Legislation enacted or under considerations, in, under consideration that protect human well-being include 85, commonly known as the Give Worker Bill, which requires workers to be classified as employees and not contractors to ensure they receive workplace benefits to ensure they receive workplace benefits and protections as an employee. SB135, which requires all employers with over five employees to provide 12 weeks of protected leave of absence each year, in addition to existing lease of absence already required. Both AB5 and SB135 protect worker health, and we do not support your board asking the governor to suspend either of these bills. Because of these uncertain times, AB36, which covers rent control and the ability of local jurisdictions to enact or expand rent control to residential properties constructed within 10 years of the date upon which the owner seeks to establish the initial or subsequent rental rate, we would like to keep this in place, as Scotts Valley is a tribe without a reservation, and many of our tribal members live in rental housing throughout the state of California. We strongly encourage the governor to keep this legislation intact now more than ever. While we also have concern and or support for each of the other bills listed in the middle for your consideration, our overall position is that the Lake County Board of Supervisors should not support nor send this letter to the governor of California. And then during your meeting, um, during your discussion that, uh, that you just had, um, Ms. Logston followed up with an email stating that, "Good morning, as the letter was amended before this morning's meeting, but after yesterday afternoon, I ask that this item be postponed as it did not receive proper notice." And there is additional public comment, but those are the two from Scotts Valley. Shall I continue, Mr. Chair, or do you want?
I just, I just want to, real quick, I, I think she's already picked up on the fact that 40, 44, 135, and 36 were, uh, were pulled, because I think some of them were actually dead, that they haven't even been enacted. So, um, so the, the concerns that she have, that she has are, um, are not, uh, they're kind of moot at this point anyway, since most of the bills are dead.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, you're mowed, you're, I mean, you're muted. Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Shall I continue, or?
Go ahead.
Okay, so the next comment comes from Arnod Hubert. "Your supervisors, I am concerned to see that the board is considering sending a letter to Governor Newsom to ask him to suspend recent legislation that would affect private enterprise jobs. Most of the bills listed in the proposed letter aim at protecting workers and, and tenants, who more than ever should be the ones that communities such as Lake County should see its leaders be most concerned about. Tough economic times doesn't mean business owners should get a pass on regulation at the expense of workers. We all need to pay bills. Specifically, Senate Bill 567, is the board actually of the opinion that this piece of legislation, which aims to specifically provide, uh, or improve workers' compensation rights to those providing care to patients of infected infectious diseases, should be suspended? Are you serious? This bill was sponsored by the National Nurses United Organization. What a slap in the face of healthcare professionals to suggest those protections should be suspended when those workers are in the front lines of this pandemic. It is absolutely shameful to even suggest it. I hope the board will do the right thing and will not send this letter to their governor. Lake County government should not be on the wrong side of history and look to try to sabotage the rights of people most in need of protection right now. Yours respectfully, Arnod Hubert."
So, again, yeah, 567 was pulled because it's, uh, I believe it was dead as well. Okay, Carol, go ahead and continue.
Okay, and, um, I apologize, I guess you could hear my dog walking around. I'm gonna shut the door to prevent that, and then I'll read the last one. Just a moment. Okay, so... The last one comes from Anna Ravenwood, and she says, "To all board members, the above referenced letter needs more specific date, details in order to gain public support. As such, I ask the following questions to be publicly addressed at this meeting. Please specifically explain the focus of each of the legislation." And then she lists AB40, 673, 725, 5798, 82, and 1332. "Then specifically explain how each piece of legislation would be detrimental to private enterprise jobs in Lake County. Please specifically explain the focus of each of the following, SB37, 44, 135, 10, 246, and 567. Then specifically explain how each piece of legislation would be detrimental to private enterprise in Lake County. Are the private enterprise jobs affected in Lake County and referred to above as essential or non-essential under state law? I support the success of small local business, and I fully support any federal or state legislation which offers grants and small business loans during the COVID-19 emergency. My concern lies with this letter, which is extremely vague and therefore difficult for the public to fully understand or support. Thanks for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Anna Rose Ravenwood of Kelseyville, California."
Supervisor Brown? So, again, most of the bills that she listed were off the old list, so, you know, given, given the public another week to review this as well, because this actually was, you know, included in Monday's, or Friday. So the public only had over the weekend to look at it, so she could, uh, she could take a look at the, the legislation that has been proposed recently. The list is, uh, you know, much less than it was, and it's easy for her to do the research on that. So I think letting, letting folks have another week is, is good, uh, will work for that purpose.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Brown.
Yep.
Any more public comment, Carol? On this item, Carol? You're on mute, Carol?
She's chasing her dog.
Yeah. Uh, Jake, any public comment on this item?
It doesn't look like I have any public comment at this time.
Thank you. Uh, if there are no more, uh, we'll bring it back.
Nothing further, Mr. Chair, sorry about that, I.
All right. We'll bring it back to the board, and we will, uh, move this item to, uh, our April, our, our next meeting next week, uh, is that, forgot the date, sorry. Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
I just want to finish with, I, I'm thankful that Supervisor Brown listened to, um, my comments when, uh, we were communicating, and, uh, I, I'm just, I wanted to make sure and say that, uh, I appreciate your flexibility on, uh, looking at your letter and reviewing it and submitting a new revised version. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. So we'll go ahead and, um, move this item to, uh, our April 7th agenda, uh, for the Board of Supervisors. Okay, moving along to item 7.3. Item 7.3, A, Consideration of Recommended Changes in Customary Budget Procedures for Fiscal Year FY 2020 and 2021, uh, Recommended in Final Budget, and B, Consideration of Changes to the Board's Annual Meeting Calendar to 2020. Go ahead, Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of the COVID-19, uh, crisis, staff is forced to make alternative plans for the impending budget process for fiscal year 2021, because our staffing resources are so severely limited due to disaster response. Staff met recently with the Auditor Controller and with county department heads to discuss solutions, and we determined that the best option would be to in, to initiate the budget process, meaning kick it off by replicating the numbers from adopted budget for fiscal year 1920 as a starting point for fiscal year 2021. Uh, the Auditor's Office could automate that process, and what would happen after that is the administrative office would then work with departments to make minor adjustments, um, up through approximately May 1st. Then we would flip, uh, what has been your, your practice for the last few years, um, and department heads' full budget presentations to your board would be made in their entirety when you do final budgets. Final budgets would become the two-day hearing process, and we're proposing that September 23rd and 24th, um, be the date that you hear final recommended budget hearings. And alternatively, you would also hear recommended budget hearings, um, in a more abbreviated fashion on June 9th. So that is staff's recommendation and the reason why we need to make these changes. And so Section A on this memorandum is really informational to inform your board as to the process staff has worked out. Um, and then B is the action we're recommending you take to actually make the changes in your budget calendar. Excuse me, in your meeting calendar.
Okay, thank you, Carol, for presenting that item. Uh, Supervisor Brown? Did you have a comment? No, you're still on mute?
No, I was, uh, practicing, scratching my nose with my hand.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Uh, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, um, I do have a, a question. So we would get a, uh, brief, uh, summary on June 9th of the full, um, uh, budget in September. At approximately, what point do you think that the whole budget would be available uh, for us to be able to review and, and get our questions? Um, just kind of curious as to when that, uh, uh, budget book might be completed for us to start doing those reviews? And second, I'm a little, uh, and, and it, it, the crystal ball thing, none of us have that crystal ball to see, but to use exactly the same numbers as last year, knowing that right now we have this very volatile stock market and economy going on, we're shutting down a whole lot of businesses because of COVID-19, I, I don't know how comfortable I am with using the same numbers as last year, rather than maybe looking at a 5% decrease, because we're gonna see less sales tax, we're gonna see, uh, potential property taxes going down. I, I, I'm not, again, it's a crystal ball thing, but to use the same numbers, knowing the volatility that we're in, I don't know how comfortable I am at this point. Um, and just wanted to open that up for potential discussion.
So to address your first question, I believe Stephen Carter is in the boardroom. If we could have him come up to the table we put in front there with the microphone, so he can socially distance. Stephen is also preparing an amended budget manual calendar for department heads, um, which I don't have in front of me right now, but I believe it, it clarifies the date that, um, the budget, uh, binders would be available for board members in advance of September 23rd and 24th. Stephen, can you speak to that?
Yeah, am I on? Sam? Oh, yeah.
Would it be distributed to board members on September 15th?
September 15th would be a good day. We will have the, the numbers before then. You wouldn't have the real book to review until about a week or two ahead, kind of like a normal budget cycle. But if you want something ahead, we can provide that.
And in terms of the other concern that you raised Supervisor Sabatier, that, um, that, that this disaster is going to hit us all hard financially, um, we are also, our office would also be giving instructions to departments that, um, that they're really doing bare-bones spending between proposed budgets and final budgets, so we can ensure that we, that we don't overspend. And, uh, and that would also be, um, it really in support of replicating the, the same budget as last year. We're not authorizing any new position allocations or, um, capital assets and, and things that, that would, uh, in some cases necessitate extraordinary expenditures. So we feel confident that, that the department heads understand, uh, the situation, and in fact, they're grateful that, that we've come up with, uh, this method that will, um, relieve them from having to submit anything, although they will meet with us, um, once the replication is done. And, um, I, I think to just arbitrarily come up with some kind of percentage and, and take it off the top, um, when we don't have a lot of information, um, to really determine what that would be, um, might be cumbersome and unnecessary at this point.
Supervisor Brandl, did you have a question? Yeah, thank you. Supervisor Scott? Excuse me. Um, Chair, I want to thank you for bringing forward these, uh, you know, the discussion points on this. Um, from my point of view, uh, obviously, we don't have a crystal ball. I think this is a good solution to move forward at this point, um, you know, in, in the suggestions that have been presented by staff and everyone working on these issues. And ultimately, it'll be something we're keeping an eye on as we move through the process here. So, uh, those are my comments. Um, I'm gonna go ahead, if there are no more comments from the board at this point, go ahead and open it up, public comment. Hey, do we have any public comment, Carol? Or Jake?
Chair, I, I do not have public comment, uh, none has been sent in via email on this item. Uh, but I, it's one more of my own. Um, we actually came up with this plan, internally embedded it with our department heads before we heard what other counties were doing, and, uh, because they're all faced with the same problem. In fact, the state budget will have similar challenges, as you can imagine. Um, and, and we've learned that most counties are doing something very similar to, to what we are proposing, where the numbers are replicated to get the fiscal year off the ground and, uh, and updated shortly thereafter.
Good. All right, Jake, are there any other public comment?
No, it looks like I have no public comment on my side.
Thank you very much. Uh, I, I know we kind of went over item A and B, uh, so Section B is Consideration of Changes to the Board's Annual Meeting Calendar, 2020. Uh, Supervisor Sabatier, do you have, uh, further comment? Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Actually, I, I do have one last comment, and this is just, uh, housekeeping. If you look at the, uh, revised BOs calendar, um, attachment, the month of June is a little strange, where it ends with 30 and then starts up over with 26, just, uh, so that there's no confusion, but that's just, uh, housekeeping.
Um, thank you, thank you, Supervisor, we'll get that fixed.
Other than that, I will move to consider changes to the Board's annual meeting, uh, let me start with A. Uh, move to, uh, approve recommended changes in customary procedure for fiscal year 2020, 2021, recommended and final recommended budget.
Second, with a comment, you guys keep adding meetings to me, I, that had a countdown going here. This is, it's not fair.
There's no net gain in meetings, sir.
We're, we're having, we're having one today, we had one last Friday, of course there is.
Oh, true, okay.
I, I tell, I tell people that, I tell people that if you have a, have a, uh, terminal disease, you want to run for the Board of Supervisors, because that last year will seem like forever.
Uh, Anita, go ahead.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to make sure the motion is then under B, because A is informational only. So the motion is to approve the changes to the Board's annual meeting calendar and moving the recommended budget hearings to June 9th, final recommended budget hearings to September 23 and 24 of this year.
Thank you, Anita.
So moved.
I'll second.
I, I, there was already a second on his motion. Rob, are you still second? Okay, so, uh, Supervisor Sabatier, uh, seconded by Supervisor Brown. All in favor? Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, go ahead, Johanna?
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Brandl?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Scott?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving back to item 7.1 is our, uh, Supervisor Calendars Reports. So we'll go ahead and start, um, with Supervisor Sabatier.
Uh, I have nothing to report at this point, other than doing meetings every single morning, uh, listening in to see what's going on over at the EOC from Dr. Pace and Director Pomeroy, uh, trying to help out wherever it is I can and, uh, just be up to date on all the information that's happening. Um, that's all that I have at this moment in time, but I will remind everybody, because I need to remind myself, make sure your 700 forms are in, today's the last day.
Uh, just an update on that, that was extended until, uh, that was extended out.
Kind of like taxes, if you can do it, do it.
Yeah, I know, just letting you know.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Scott?
Um, the only thing I have on my calendar is a Continue of Care Zoom meeting on Thursday, the 2nd, at 3:30. Uh, my calendar's pretty open. If anybody needs to get ahold of me, my cell phone number is 849-4414, or you can always email me at tina.scott@lakecountyca.gov.
Thank you, Tina. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, been on the calls in the mornings, and was looking at my calendar, because of course, you know, I have three town halls. But I wanted to put something on, I don't know if we were able to get it on the agenda this time, but probably for the next time. Wanted to make sure that my town halls are watching, which I communicated with, at least the Earth Town Hall is canceled for April 1. We'll be canceling the ones for April. And, sorry, that's my dog. And what I'm going to be working on, though, is trying to do these type of meetings for the town hall at least, but of course, I'm going to need to get some preparation going on that. But in the meantime, yeah, it's just, it's just being available. I know there's a lot of constituents that still email and call, try to tend to those and connect them with the people that need to be served, so, yeah.
Thank you, Jake. Supervisor Brown? Carol? Yeah, there you go.
Um, so it's the same thing. Everything's fluid here. We're on, you know, every morning and working with Crystal and Lars and staff as much as I can without being in the way on trying to find places for quarantine and recovery. It's a challenge. We've got so many good people, as you guys know. It's just, you know, the thing that I want to mention is, you know, all these folks that are working on this stuff have worked disaster after disaster after disaster, while still doing the regular job that they do get paid for. They don't get paid for disaster. And they're, it's such, so commendable to watch the dedication that our, our staff has with all this. So anyway, I just want to throw that out there. I know you guys feel the same way. We're having, on Friday, we're having the Blue Caller Meeting again, and you look forward to that. It's a great group from around the county, and one of these days I'll get a chance to introduce them as the group, and they represent all of our districts and a lot of small businesses, large businesses, and just a, just a great group. So I look forward to that meeting again on Friday. And I'll talk to you guys some way during the week, I'm sure.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Yeah, obviously going to repeat the same things. Lot of phone calls, lot of information coming out. I know that the stimulus package came out last week, understanding the SBA opportunities, also the unemployment stuff. So just trying to be on all the pertinent calls that are going to affect the individuals that have been laid off or lost their jobs because of COVID-19. And I think that's a huge undertaking, obviously, and I know each and every one of the board members are doing that, and myself included. I think one other thing, like to just remind the public about the town hall that's going to be happening tonight, I think it's at 6:00 PM from the Public Health Officer, that please pay attention to that as it comes, as it rolls out. And it sounds like there's something next week, too, that Senator McGuire will be doing. So providing information as often as possible. I can always be reached by email, moke timon@lakecountyca.gov, or my cell phone, 707-533-9615. And thank you very much for the supervisor's being diligent on these issues, and also to all of our residents who are going through the lockdown at this point for the COVID-19. We greatly appreciate your patience and also your just involvement in helping slow this. So thank you very much out to our community and all of our workers, as I started with Dr. Barry Pace, thanking them for their hard work. So that's it. We do have, and this will be our first closed session virtually, and I will go ahead and read the item. So it's item, Closed Session 8.1, Public Employee Evaluations. The tribal health, or, sorry, Health Services Director, sorry about the tribal there, the Health Services Director, we have one item in closed session. It is currently, what I have on my phone is 11:15, or 11:14. So we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break, and then we are going to have to call, hang up, and call back in at 11:20 for our closed session.
Mr. Chair, it will be a, it will be a new meeting invite that I will see...
A new meeting invite, okay.
Yeah, to only board members and county council and the Health Services Director.
Okay. With that, we're going to go ahead and go into closed session. Thank you, everyone.